Good evening. I would like to call the January 3rd, 2019 Board of Education meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to ask Dwan Kraft to lead us in the invocation.
Thank you. So, I'm taking my invocation from "Life is Better at the Beach." Those of you who know me know that the beach is where I like to be. "A grateful heart is a happy heart." This old adage rings true even today. At the beach, it's incredibly easy to cultivate a heart of gratitude. Your toes sink deep in the sugary sand, the sun shines bright overhead, and you take a nap on the screened-in porch. Even a lunch of peanut butter sandwiches tastes good after a day at the beach. Being grateful comes easily when you're enjoying a relaxing vacation. The hard part is being grateful once the vacation ends. After you clean the sand out of your sandals, your sunburn begins to peel, and everyday life resumes. It's easy to see the difficulties and annoyances. But reflect for a moment on how your world, your life would change if you chose each day to have a grateful attitude. Look around right now. Is your refrigerator fully stocked? Thank God for His provisions of groceries, the money that paid for your food, and even the transportation that took you to the grocery store. Can you hear the birds singing outside? Thank the Lord for His creation and that He cares for the lowly sparrow and even more for you. Are you protected from the outdoor elements? Remind yourself to be grateful for your home and the safety it provides. Once you begin to have eyes of gratitude, it will become a habit, one that tunes your heart to sing a new song. Whether you're watching the sunrise while standing on the shore or driving to work, breathe out a prayer of gratitude. When your alarm goes off in the morning, let your heart rejoice in a day full of unexpected graces and gifts. When you sink into bed at night, reflect on how the Lord sustained you throughout the day. Be mindful of the blessings in each day, and your heart will be transformed. A grateful heart is a happy heart indeed. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to ask Dr. Brian Matney, Principal of Currituck County High School, to come forward, please.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Madam Chair, Mr. Stefanic, good evening. Leading us in our pledge of allegiance tonight is Senior Cadet Kylie Heilig, a four-year Air Force Junior ROTC Cadet and the Group Commander of our Currituck County High School Unit. With a grade point average of nine and a 3.6, Kylie has earned the respect of her teachers and fellow students as being well-rounded, determined, and one who strives to be premier in all that she pursues. She is a member of the Knights varsity soccer team as well as our symphonic band. Always the first to volunteer, she contributed to our unit amassing over 2,000 hours of community service in the most recent 2017-2018 academic year. As Colonel Grimes is apt to say, she is a daily embodiment of the Air Force core values of integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all one does. Kylie?
I would like to ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Class, core values: integrity first, service before self, excellence in all we do. Honor code: I would not lie, cheat, steal, nor tolerate anyone who does. Airman's creed: I am an American airman. I am a warrior. I have answered my nation's call. I am an American airman. My mission is to fly, fight, and win. I am faithful to a proud heritage, tradition of honor, and a legacy of valor. I am an American airman, guarding the freedom and justice my nation sword and shield, its century and adventure. I will defend my country with my life. I am an American airman, wingman, leader, warrior. I will never leave an amber behind. I will never falter, and I will not fail. As you were. Ms. Etheridge and the school board. On December 2nd, we were able to take an amazing trip to Hawaii on the 77th anniversary of the attack on Borough Harbor. The cadets and I have prepared a three-minute video highlighting some of the things that we have done and the experiences that we had, and afterwards, we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
(laughing)
I have red soil like western North Carolina.
Is there any questions y'all might have for us?
Yes, I have a few questions. Were you there on December 7th?
Yes, we were.
Did you tour the Arizona?
We did. We couldn't actually go onto the memorial because they were doing renovations, but we were able to get close on boats to take pictures and learn about it.
I noticed that there was, do they have a monument to the flag raising at Iwo Jima? I think you had a slide on that.
I probably, y'all remember? Yeah, talk. (laughing)
I see some people. I see some people over here.
Yes, they're nodding their head.
They're nodding their head.
One last question to get everybody to talk. Tell me what your favorite part of this trip is, what you will remember the longest.
Okay, so, well, to go back to your other question, we did stay on a Marine Corps base, and so, we did have the chance to see all of their statues and cool things that they had around. It was a very nice place, they had good facilities, and very good food. And my, personally, my favorite experience was when we visited the high school and JROTC unit that they had over there, because it was interesting to see how they kind of operated a little differently in a more tropical climate. You know, they had a different school system, and their classes were, they didn't have hallways, so between classes, they basically had to walk outside. It was just very interesting to meet the new people. They're all really welcoming, and it was a great experience.
Can you also, before you share your favorite memory, state your name?
Oh, sorry. My name is Cadet Major Ryan Engelhard.
My name's Cadet, Second Lieutenant Beaumont, and my favorite memory was, we had the option or chance to go on a torpedo retrieving crew boat, and I had a really nice and prolonged talk with one of the crewmates, and he just seemed like a nice guy. He's in his older years, and (laughing) it was just a wonderful time. Really got to know him, and he pointed some things out in my life, and his, just really welcoming.
That's wonderful.
I'm Cadet Senior Airman Rupert, and, well, personally, I loved every moment of it, so really, I don't have a favorite moment. It's just every single second, but I did love the torpedo retriever, the boat getting to learn facts, and even the Titanic scene that we did, I thought was pretty funny.
Yeah.[758.56][758.56](laughing)
Yeah, I loved every second of it. Thank you.
My name's Cadet Senior Airman Williams, and one of my favorite parts of the trip was the Pacific Aviation Museum. I like looking at the older warplanes and, like, learning about the trials and errors of the previous pilots, and we got, yeah, that was my favorite part of it. I don't want to say anything else.
I'm Cadet Airman, Senior Airman. My name is Gracee Floyd, and my favorite part of the entire thing was just looking at the memorials. It was eye-opening to what actually happened, and to see it really changes your view on
My name's Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Kylie Heilig, and my favorite part of the trip was the Black and Canteen Ceremony. I didn't know a lot about it going to Hawaii, but being able to be there and hear, like, almost firsthand, it was like secondhand accounts of what actually happened there was really eye-opening for me.
Hello, I'm Cadet Second Lieutenant Chris Horfield. One of my favorite parts of the trip was to be able to meet a lot of new, interesting people and be able to see how, like, different Air Force junior ROTC units run and operate in other areas besides just our school, and one of the, well, like, some of the, like, different scenery, all that kind of stuff was over there, and it was pretty cool to see.
My name's Mason, Cadet Senior Airman Mason Davenport. My favorite part was probably going on the boat, being able to see the different memorials, and, you know, drop the boat, seeing the different scenery.
My name is Second, or Cadet Second Lieutenant Colin Anderson. To pick a favorite part from the trip to Hawaii is kind of really, really tough. Other than the beaches and messing with the Marines, my favorite part was possibly the flying simulator. I want to fly, fight, and win, just like our creed says. I want to be a pilot, so it provided valuable insight on, well, what I want to be.
Thank you.
My name's Cadet Second Lieutenant Suddeth. My favorite part was seeing the other Hawaiian school and seeing how they operate and how they do things.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions?
I don't have a question. I just have to say that the young man who said the beaches, it was, it was beautiful. I recognize many of your pictures, many of the places that you went, and I'm so, I'm really glad y'all had that opportunity.
Yeah, and one day, if any of you are sitting up here and the Air Force ROTC has a chance to go, just remember you went there and allow them to go too.
That's right. That's right. Trip of a lifetime. I'm glad you were able to go.
Sorry, go ahead.
I have a question. How long did it take you to get there? How long were you on the plane?
About thirteen hours.
Yeah.
We did make like an hour pit stop in San Diego.
And that was when you flew there on the military plane?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, coming back, was the flight shorter or longer, about the same?
It felt way longer. We made, we made about two different stops. We flew from Honolulu to Seattle, from Seattle to Detroit, then Detroit to Norfolk.
Oh, wow.
So, and there were three-hour layaways at every stop, so we felt like we were traveling for 24 hours.
I bet, yes.
Great experience.
Yes, it is.
Well, I'd just like to ask two questions. One, how many of you had been to Hawaii previously?
None.
Oh.
Okay, one, all right.
Wait, just kidding, he has.
All right, and then, secondly, well, I'm gonna ask three, I'm sorry. How many of you would go again? And then, lastly, I, I'm very impressed, but how did this trip come about?
I guess I have the best inside of that. It was, me and Colonel fought about this one. I believe it was this November 9th. We were about to, it was a home football game, and I was part of the color guard for that game. He pulled me into his room, he asked one of our other cadets to leave the room, and I was just running through my head, what possibly have I done wrong? I was like, I wore a uniform, I've done PT, I've done, I've been good. He was like, I have a, I have an idea. I was like, okay, Colonel, what is it? He was like, I want to go Hawaii. And you can probably ask, and my eyes probably got about the size of a dollar, dollar coin. I was like, Colonel, when do you want to go to Hawaii? He was like, in about three weeks. I was like, okay, alrighty. So, it took a lot of dedication on both of our parts. It was me and another cadet, Deanna Lynch, she sadly couldn't be here today. It took a lot of us just sitting in Colonel's room, planning, counting numbers, making phone calls, and we didn't get, like, any, anything set in stone from Air Force ROTC Headquarters until exactly a week before to the day, and we didn't get our space on the flight set in stone until about four days until takeoff. So, it was a lot of praying and a lot, a lot of planning.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to thank the Colonel for the idea.
Absolutely.
And then, I'd like to thank you and all your cadets for your persistence and hard work in making it happen.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm really impressed with everything that you guys did and represent, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Currytuck County is very proud of all of you, and you represented us well over in Hawaii, and I know you enjoyed your time over there, and thank you for everything that you do.
And we, I know you realize this trip would not have been possible without Colonel Grimes. He is the one that contacted Superintendent Stefanic and said, this is what we want to do, and
Made it happen.
Made it happen. So, hats off to you, Colonel Grimes, and thank you for all you do for our children.
Yes, thank you very much.
We'd like to say thank you for such an outstanding opportunity. It was a chance of a lifetime, and we took advantage of it. So, thank you for allowing us to do that trip.
Thank you.
Proud of y'all. Good job.[1202.26][1202.26](applause)
Thank you.
Good night.
Ms. Etheridge, trying to make a comment real quick? Folks in the audience may not realize this, but on behalf of the students and the Colonel and the high school, I'd like to publicly thank the Board of Education. The Board of Education had to take two actions to make this trip go off without a hitch, and they acted quickly and even did a tentative okay on one action to make sure that the approvals went out before the very next board meeting. So, they were very timely and very quick-acting, and I appreciate them recognizing what an opportunity this was for the students and letting it go forward.
At this time, we will have recognition of the Currituck County High School volleyball team. Our coach and Currituck County High School Assistant Principal Doug Toll will introduce our team members and tell us about their journey to the state championship.[1275.41][1275.41](applause)
Board members, thank you for the opportunity to stand in front of you and have the time. Mr. Stefanic, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask the players who were able to attend tonight from the 2018 state championship team to step up and join me.[1315.16][1315.16](applause) So, I have a few things that I'm going to say, and then, pretty much like all season, I'm gonna step out of the way and let these ladies say what they need to say as well. So, I've had the great privilege of having the opportunity for the past two years to be involved with this team and coach to the extent that I'm capable of, the ladies, and then with their incredible run that they've had this year. I need to say thank you to a few folks before I proceed. I did thank my wife for the added responsibilities that it heaped on her while I was away from coaching. Coach Chris Ferretti was the assistant coach, and Robin Kane was also assistant coach. Couldn't have done anything without their help. I do want to say this about Coach Ferretti and Coach Robin Kane, is that, and they never publicize this, Coach Ferretti donated all of his supplement back into the volleyball team, and he also sponsored his JV team to the $200 to a tournament, and then Coach Kane was a volunteer coach as well, and he spent countless hours as well, so I certainly thank everything y'all did. The athletic trainers, I know I have sat in meetings where we talked about the merit of the trainers that we have. Warren Micky and then Ms. Phelps were invaluable to us, Ms. Phelps especially, she was a mentor to a lot of the players, and just was invaluable. She attended our playoff games and was at NC State with us, and just having her by our side was just invaluable. I'm not gonna take yours. Okay, all right. She wanted to say thank you to Sam Walker. Having him at our events just added a new dynamic to our games. I've had coaches from all the different conferences that we played who have played at Currituck, just seeing Sam's praises in the environment that we create as part of that plane. Ms. Harlow, she does the fantastic pictures for Currituck collage, not only for volleyball but for all the other teams, to our parents who are just invaluable in support of donations of materials, flowers, food, creative services, funds, so they helped make the season as special as it was. Mr. Griffin was especially fond to say thank you. He always helped us with stats in a pinch, and then, I think, he got a little reward to sit down courtside at the championship game at NC State. The administrative team of Dr. Matney, Mr. Wallace, and Ms. Melange for helping support the team, and myself. The athletic boosters, Mr. Parker and his family, anytime we had a home game, they were there countless hours afterwards. And then, finally, the community of Currituck County. I was just blown away by the amount of support throughout the season, through the playoffs, and afterwards as well. Businesses and individuals, including Currituck Barbecue, BJ's, Howard Hanna, Shown and Barlow, Integrated Financial Partners, the pool guys, and I feel like I'm missing somebody, but the amount of support that we were shown was just incredible. So, we had a fantastic time, and then, the support that we had was just incredible. I'm gonna get out of the way now, after saying my thanks, I'm gonna ask my three captains to come up here, and if they want to speak and say a little bit about their experience, and then, I guess if y'all have questions at that point. The three captains, it's your word, led by Cameron Johnson, Senior, Kayla Reagan-Smith, Senior, and Faith Hughes. Ladies?[1554.02][1554.02](applause)
Good evening. My name is Cameron Johnson, and before I get started, I would like to thank you for having the volleyball team here. It's definitely an honor. I want to thank the coaches for giving up time to have practice and away from their families. I want to actually thank our community as well, because you could just be driving down the street and you would just see signs that says, "Good luck, Currituck volleyball," and even at the state game, we had people airing the show online and watching us. My experience on this team was incredible. This past season is something that will definitely stay with us. Made history, winning states, first year Currituck has ever done that. We also, we always pooled together on the court. Even if someone made a mistake, we went up to them, told them to take a deep breath. Everyone makes mistakes, you just gotta move on to the next point. A thing that I don't think a lot of teams realized about Currituck volleyball is that we didn't just have six girls on the court. We had every 15 girls on that court at all times. The bench was always with us on our sides. Winning states, we had that from day one. Coach Doug gave us a paper, and what was our goal for the season, we wanted to reach it, and it was always beat Cabro, because that's the last school we've lost to the last two years, and once Cabro got knocked out, we had a run for it, and we did, and we made it all the way. This team, especially this year, is definitely gonna stay with me. They've definitely became part of my family. They are my best friends. We would always hang out, go to football, soccer, and other high school sport games with each other, and just hang out. Another thing I would like to say about the coaches is that my freshman and sophomore year, I did have Jen Hopkins as my coach, and she was a huge part of my volleyball career as well. She's like a second mom to me, and she was a second mom to every girl on the team. And my junior and senior year came Coach Doug, and good old Doug, always knew. Before practice, he would always come up to you and ask how your day was, or if anything was wrong. He was, made sure everyone was okay before we started practice, and after our conference, we got real serious, because we wanted to go all the way this year, and without year, and without them, we couldn't have done it. I wanted to give a huge thanks to the daily events as well. They've been there through us every game, always there, even the state game, they drove down to NC State and was always there. But I would like to recognize my brother and my family, Chase Johnson. He, when we had our summer camps here and our summer practices, he missed out events and could have been with his friends before he goes back to college, and he spent time with his team and built this team to be as strong as they are today. And with all the seniors leaving and everything, we definitely have left an impact on Currituck, and I am proud to say that I am part of the 2018 state champ, Currituck team.
Would you, would you come forward and state your name, and if you're a senior or junior?
I'm a senior, and my name is Kaylee Reagan-Smith, and I would just like to say thank you to the community, because you guys just did a fantastic job of supporting us everywhere we went, and I don't think we could have done it without you guys.
Thank you.
My name is Abby Rose, and I'm a junior, and also thank you as well.
My name is Laura Griffin, and I'm also a junior, and also thank you.
My name is Amri Powers, I'm a sophomore, and thank you.
My name is Faith Hughes, and I'm a senior, and this was my first year coming to Currituck for playing for the high school, because I had recently just moved back from Japan. So just coming back here to like the love and support from all this community and like the team welcoming me here, it was just like really nice. And like Cameron was saying, back to our goal, my one goal was to win states, because I didn't get to play with them last year against Carrow, so I was like, oh, I'm going to win states this year, so I got this. And so since I had that set, we were just going through the season and everything, and we had our ups and downs, but like, at like, we had this one tournament where we just like all together came together as a team, and we finally clicked, and we just like figured, like we put all the pieces together, so like we could tell like we were that dream team at the end of the season, and that's where like we took it to states. And I just couldn't thank them for like a better season, and thank y'all for all the love and support.
I'm a senior, my name is Katrina Griffith, and I just wanted to say that this team is really one that's going to stick with me.
My name is Brooke Matusko, I'm a senior, and I just wanted to say to thank you to the community again, you guys were great, especially Currituck Barbecue for hosting that party for us, and you guys for inviting us here. And I just want to say that I'm really proud of our team and how hard we've worked this year.
My name's Whitney Schelling, I'm a junior, and I just want to thank, say thank you so much for everything that you've done. We definitely could not have done it without you guys, and thank you to our team, and I'm so proud of all of us.
Well, thank you very much for winning state championship. One other thing I wanted to say, stay close. I get together with some of my girlfriends from high school, 40 years later, we get together and we have the best time, and it's like we've never missed a beat, so stay close and, you know, write each other, or you don't, nobody writes anymore, text each other, Facebook friend each other.
We're going to get a picture, so just...
Social media.
Get you guys in the back, the board in the back, and I'll put them around you. Alright, girls, you'll fill in, like find a spot between them, you know what I'm saying? Don't stand directly in front, find a spot between them if you can. No, you don't have to, you don't have to swat. Yeah, you're going to stand between.
You can lean on Dr. Donovan's shoulder.
If you guys want to come take pictures, parents, you're welcome to come up here as well. Alright, we're going to go on three, you ready? I haven't got enough of everybody in here. One, two, three. Awesome, I'll get out of the way so we all can take pictures.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Do you know what? Thank you.
I always like to see the ones that look tall, the girls that are as tall as me, or if I'm still taller than most of them. Even with the heels on, I still got her by a couple inches.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. Congratulations again.
Okay, at this time, we have recognition of students, Matthew Weeks, Currituck County High School chorus teacher Tiffany Arbogast will recognize Matthew Weeks for being selected to sing in the All-National Honor Ensemble. Matthew was selected recently for the International Ensemble that will be performing at Carnegie Hall in February.
Good evening, thank you guys so much for having us tonight. Just a wonderful thing to have a spotlight of our students, and what a great night this has started out to be, lots of recognition and things to celebrate in Currituck County High School, so thank you for all of your love and support on a regular basis. So again, I'm Tiffany Arbogast, chorus teacher at Currituck County High School, and beside me, this amazing young man, who looks very grown, is Matthew Weeks. He came to us, to Currituck County Schools from Withville, Virginia, and he came in as a freshman, and his funny backstory is, his chorus teacher called me and said, "I have this eighth grade young man that's going to be coming to your school system, and he's incredible." And I'm like, awesome. The email says, "He is a second bass." Well, in my world, that's generally impossible.
That doesn't happen.
That doesn't usually happen, and so I thought, okay, this lady might be a little off, let's, let's see what happens. So he walks in, and he says hello, and I'm like, oh, okay. So there's this deep-voiced young man, and I test his range vocally, and sure enough, he is a second bass. Very rare that even at a senior year, I would have a true second bass in the chorus, so definitely a very special case that we have here with, with this young man's talent and his God-given abilities, so I'm super excited to, to recognize him tonight for that. So there are many things that the chorus and the band programs get to participate in that highlight the multitude of students at once, from concerts to state-level events like MPA, which is a fancy word for state contest, where we honor and get to compete as a whole class or a whole ensemble. And there are also individual opportunities, such as the opportunities that Matthew participated in this past few years that he's been with us. And so his freshman year, we were still in a much of a building phases with the choral program and had not begun any steps in the direction of all-state choir, or MPA, or anything dealing with national honor choir either. And so this young man came to me with a wealth of talent and definitely the desire to pursue something in the area of music beyond what he got from the instructional practices of the classroom. And so I want to publicly thank Matthew and his family for pushing me as an educator to do more for all of my students, and so I just want to publicly say that before I recognize him for his individual accomplishments. And so this year marks the, the third year in a row that Matthew Weeks has been accepted into the North Carolina Honors Ensemble. That is an audition-based ensemble, and they take a select amount of students across the entire state of North Carolina. This marks the second year that Matthew Weeks has been accepted into the International Ensemble, and which, oh, sorry, I said, to the National Ensemble, got ahead of myself. And this past year, as well as last year, performed at the Coronado Springs Resort in Disney's Orlando, Florida, and what an amazing experience that has been. I'll allow him an opportunity to say a few things about that or if you have questions in a moment. And so two years in a row, and both of those years has auditioned for a solo, once he's arrived, and both of those years have been awarded a solo. So just a little bit of information and background, in the Honors Ensemble this year, this is the Disney trip to Honors Ensemble end of November, there were 240 members of this ensemble, 240 students. Of the bass twos, which is Matthew's voice part, there were only 30, and of the 30, there were only two from the state of North Carolina. So Matthew was one of two representing our state. The total amount of students from the state of North Carolina in the mixed ensemble were nine, so nine students across our state representing, which is a pretty amazing thing. I do want to mention too, that in order to be eligible for this, you have to be in grades nine, 10, or 11 in the 2017-18 school year. You have to attend a school in one of the 50 states of the United States, the District of Columbia or Department of Defense School. In addition, he has to be a member of his school's choral, string, guitar, or instrumental ensemble, because this goes beyond vocal, as you'll find out in just a moment. As well, his director has to be a member in good standing of NAFME, which is our Association for Music Educators in our state. And so all of those things were in play. Matthew has auditioned for these events and has made it every single time, which is a tremendous honor. To go a step further, and as you've already stated, this year, for the first time, Matthew auditioned for the International Ensemble, and there were two options to audition for. One is an opportunity to perform at Sydney, Australia, the other being an opportunity to perform at Carnegie Hall, New York. And so he applied for the one in Carnegie Hall, New York, and got his congratulations letter shortly after his audition was received. And so huge congratulations to Matthew. And before he speaks on his opportunity and what that's allowed him, or that you have questions, I do want to say that beyond what he gets in the classroom, Matthew is just a dedicated student to the craft of music. He takes private vocal lessons on a weekly basis with a wonderful vocal instructor in Virginia. In addition to that, he has taken piano lessons under Mrs. Nell Long and pursues every opportunity to perform. He's also participated the past two summers in a row? Is it two or three now? For Throga. Two summers in a row at a Throga retreat. Throga is basically throat yoga, and so it's an opportunity in Las Vegas for him to go and, and improve upon his craft. And not only has, have I seen a growth in his vocal abilities and musicianship, but also in his, his stage presence, his outward demeanor, as you will soon find out, as he has also landed the male lead role in our spring musical, Guys and Dolls. So, oh my gosh, there's so much to celebrate with Matthew though. At this time though, I'm going to turn it over to Matthew and allow him to say a few things about his experience, and then open it up to any questions that you might have.
Ladies and gentlemen on the board, as you know, my name is Matthew Weeks. I am here because of the guidance that I've had with my previous choral director, Brandy Baxter, who can't be here because she's in the state of Virginia, obviously. But I'm also here because of the guidance that I've had from my choral director Tiffany Arbogast, and I don't believe that without her, I would be where I am today. So if you would please give her a round of applause. My many thank yous, I would like to thank my parents, Shelley and Michael Weeks, who carp me everywhere and tolerate when I'm out late, either performing or when I'm at these functions, I practice for anywhere between eight to 13 hours in a given stretch, with breaks for lunch, because they're not slave-driving us, but still, they tolerate me, and I couldn't ask for any more support than what my parents have given me, so if you would please give them a round of applause as well. To talk about my experiences, I have to go back to my eighth grade year, when I first did any sort of state function, period. I was selected as one of the bases, and for the very first time at that particular school, to be a part of the middle school Virginia Honors Ensembles. Then, of course, I moved here, and the rest of that is what she said. But the best way that I can give you an experience of what I've done is just to hear your questions. So if you have any questions at this time, including our high school and early college representatives, please feel free.
Yeah, I have a question, Matthew.
Yes, sir.
I know what a second bass is in baseball, but I don't have a, I don't have a clue what it is in music. Could you explain a little more what second bass is?
So a second bass in the music world is someone with the voice part that sings the lowest notes in the choir. And while technically I am listed as a second bass, my voice is continually dropping as we age, for lack of a better term, and I believe that in the next two, three years, I will achieve what is known as being an octavist, which is singing lower than a bass two.
And that's very rare.
Sometimes.
Are there, are there parts for octavists?
In Russian Orthodox Christian music, yes, sir.
What are your goals for post-high school?
For post-high school, I'm happy to announce that I recently was accepted into Eastern Carolina University. I plan on auditioning for East Carolina University School of Music in February on 23rd. In addition to that audition, I would like to see myself performing and doing what I do best, which is, just said that, forgive me, I want to be a performer. My dad thinks I'd make a great teacher, I disagree with him regularly, but I want to continue to do what I can while I'm here to improve the school program musically as a whole, what we can do to increase support and funding for the choir and the band, respectively.
That's wonderful. Any, any other questions or remarks?
Amazing.
It is amazing, we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
I was able to attend the chorus concert, the holiday concert, and you were, you all blew us out of the water, I mean, beautiful.
Well, glad you enjoyed it.
Yes, I did.
I too enjoyed that, amazing.
Thank you.
Just a comment, I was in Orlando, Florida, and Matthew sang in the National Choir, and it was such a rich experience. It literally brought many of us to tears. And Matthew was selected as the very first presenter representing the National Choir to all the thousands of people who live there. And I didn't know he was going to do that, and then I saw him, and I mentioned, you know, that's, that's Matthew, I was telling you about from Currituck High School. And to be in the National Choir, you know, you have to compete against people from all 50 states, and it's extremely tough. And from Carolina, I was in my family, a lot of friends from home, when he took that microphone, it was just such a feeling of, I was so proud of you, Matthew.
Thank you.
And had a beautiful job at the choir, the National Choir, it's like in the Olympics or something. And then your parents, your mom, your dad, and other family members, I mean, everybody there, just, I personally have no doubt that you're the internationally well-known, beautiful voice, and the character that you hold in public is, is awesome.
Thank you, sir.
I'm just really proud of you, and our family is, and so, you know, thank you for your supreme effort, really big buck.
Thank you, sir.
Yay. One final thank you again to you, because these opportunities are made available to my students because of your approval for different things, so we certainly appreciate all the opportunities that you allow the students of Currituck County to participate in. You know, you hear a lot of people talk about being in different places and the grass being greener, but I'm, I'm going to tell you, I'm Currituck-born and bred, and the opportunities just continue to grow for our county, and that's thanks to you. So again, thank you for all that you do to make these things possible for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all to you, Ms. Arbogast.
Yes, yes.
You do an outstanding job with your students.
Yes, you do. At this time, our Currituck County High School band teacher, Lee Burgess, will recognize Noah Justice for being selected to play in the All-National Honor Ensemble.
Ms. Etheridge, the board, and Mr. Stefanic, thank you for having us here today to talk about Noah Justice and all of his accomplishments thus far. So in order to be part, selected in the band world for the All-National Chor, chorus, All-National Concert Band, it's a lot like chorus, they have to take an audition as well, but for us, there's a lot more, there are a few more steps before that happens. So Noah has to first pass the audition at the region level, so he will go, he goes up every January, we'll do it again next week, and he'll compete against the other high school bass, string bass players in the surrounding eastern districts, so this is everything east of I-95 to the coast. He won the audition last year, he was the, he was the sole bass player for the 9-10 audition band, so this 9-10 meaning ninth grade and 10th grade ensemble. He was the sole bass player for that, so that means that he was elevated to the state level for competition, and where he was going up against all the other bass players from the ninth and 10th grade across all of North Carolina, in which he won again and became the sole bass player representing all of North Carolina as the 9-10 bass player. From there, he was eligible to take the From there, he was eligible to take the audition for All-National Concert Band. He was one of two bass players who were accepted into the All-National Band this year, meaning that he not only is representing North Carolina, but he's one of the premier bass players for the high school level for band. And that's a huge accomplishment. It means that there's a lot of hours of practice, a lot of hours of going to private lessons, a lot of hours of just asking, hey, hey, Mr. Burgess, will you listen to this? And me saying, no, not right now. There's a lot of hours of that, and there's a lot of hours of just being very studious on learning how to play the string bass itself. The string bass itself is a very difficult instrument, and he puts a lot of effort, a lot of effort and a lot, a lot, a lot of passion into what he does. And we benefit greatly at the high school because of it. He, at the high school, participates in all the ensembles that we have. So, he, throughout any given day, I see him for three or four bells. So, he'll come in the morning, he'll do jazz band with us, he does marching band, you've probably seen him on the marching field this year, playing bass in the back and then eventually in the front. He is part of our Advanced Jazz Combo. He does wind ensemble with us. He also participates in a community, in the greater community, by being part of the Bay Youth Wind, Bay Youth Symphony. He's part of the top ensemble, and he's the principal player, meaning that he is the first chair or the best player within the ensemble as the string bass player. That being said, he's also participated at the region level and has won the first chair position for four years now at the region level. He has also won the first chair place for all state for three years now, correct?
Four years.
Four years as well? Oh, we're working on, we're working on the fifth. And so, that's, this is just, all of these things are just to say that he has put in a supreme amount of effort into what he's doing. On top of this, the All-National Band only accepted 121 members in general. Of the 121 members, he was one of six people to represent North Carolina. So, when he went up there and he performed with that ensemble, he was just, he was something rare. This sort of effort, and the fact that it's coming out of North Carolina and out of our county, it's something special. It's something that every time I see him adorn his medals, and he tells me more about what he is, he wants to do, it makes me supremely proud to be his teacher. I'm going to let him come speak a little bit about his time there, and also take any questions that you have about his time at the All-National Concert Band.
My name's Noah Justice. Yeah, Nationals, that was insane. As soon as you go to Disney World and realize that you're there for band class, like, come on. Like, ROTC went to Hawaii, but, you know, I, band class. You go to Disney World. No, it was a really cool experience. It's really insane sitting on a stage. Well, sitting on a stage in general is pretty insane. But anyways, you know, sitting on a stage with the best musicians in the country, and just looking around and knowing that every single person on their instruments is the best in their class, the best in the country. And it's just, it's an excellent opportunity to play with them, and I couldn't have done any of that without the support of my band director, Mr. Lee Burgess, and my parents, Joel and Stacy Justice.
Do you have any questions for him?
Sure.
I do. Are you going to pursue a career in music?
Oh, yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
What's your dream?
Well, for right now, you know, grades, music's important, so I'm definitely going to go to college for music, music school. And my primary goal is to be a touring active musician. I want to be on stages across the world, that's what I want to do. I want to play for people. I want people to move to the sounds that I create. That's my passion.
College.
Oh, well, you know, my dream college is Berklee College of Music, but I definitely have a bunch of colleges I can back up on. You know, I'm going to apply to U, UNC Greens for real. Yeah, I totally remember the college that I'm going to apply to.
Well, it sounds like Berklee's your first choice.
Your personality just beams, and you're going to go far. It doesn't matter what you do.
You know, I told him not to have me speak up.
Hey, I love it. No, I love it. I love your honesty.
So, honesty is the best way.
Yes, it is.
I have a question.
Sure.
What age were you when you developed this interest in playing an instrument?
So, I was four years old, and my sister, she plays, my sister plays piano, she's fabulous. But, you know, I was four years old, five years old, and my parents threw me into piano with her, but I didn't, I didn't enjoy piano at all. I was not good at it, I didn't enjoy it. And I was playing around on my sister's keyboard, and I found a cello setting, you know, a string setting, and I really liked that tone. I was like, Mom, get me a cello, and she got me a cello. And I played the cello for a while. I actually took lessons with Sydney, she played violin with me. And I did that for a while. And then, I wasn't progressing the cello, it just wasn't cool, and then I figured out that there's a thing that looks like the cello, and it also has a guitar version of it. So, you already know, like, that's the instrument. And so, I, you know, I picked that up.
How many instruments do you play?
I, I mean, I play.
I'm not saying like you do, but any, any instruments. How many do you play?
I could probably play three to four instruments.
Good, good.
But, yeah, it kind of went on from there. I got a bass guitar, my dad got me one, and I just went off from there. I practiced my butt off and got my chops up, watched YouTube videos, you know, whatever I had to do. And, yeah, my grandmother, actually, she was the string bass player of the Virginia Symphony for 30, 40 years. And so, she has a lot of connections up in Virginia, so I take private lessons up there with Chris White, who's the principal bass player of the Virginia Symphony. And so, with his help as well, you know, it's really increased my skills a lot.
Great, good for you.
Any more questions?
You make Currituck proud.
One last question, Jackson V or Maroon V?
What bass player played on Jackson V?
I don't even know which one sang bass for Jackson V.
Uh, Jackson V, yeah.
We, we, Ms. Doughty and I had the privilege to sit in on an English class and to talk about his passion for the bass. He did a presentation on the bass. And I don't remember the title, but there was a lot of history of bass in there, and he was cruising along. And I'm one that's old enough that could catch the little glitch in his presentation, that he was talking about, you know, music as he cruised along, and there was something in there that was supposed to be about the Jackson V, and he said Maroon V instead.
Regard that, disregard that.
So, at the end, at the end of the presentation, I told him there was just a little bit of a difference and a different time lapse between Jackson V and Maroon V. So, just a little bit. So, we had some fun with that at the end of his presentation.
Fifty-year difference, you know.
Well, we're proud of you. Very proud.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I have a question as well.
Yes.
Oh, sure. So, if you just had to guess, how many hours would you say that you've put into your instrument?
The bass?
Yeah, into the bass.
Um, four years. I can't do math well. I'd say like, 2,000, probably. I don't know.
Closer to 10,000.
Everyone thinks that.
Yeah, I believe it.
I would think that.
To become a master at your instrument, it takes at least like 10,000 hours, is what people say. And, yeah, four years, you know, I'd say about 2,000 hours, yeah.
Can I say a couple things, too?
Sure.
Okay, so, I don't know if you guys have ever actually been to a Bay Youth concert or seen it, heard of it, but they are awesome. All of the kids in the Bay Youth Orchestra are completely awesome. But I've been to a couple, because I was in it myself in middle school, and my sister is in it now, and I've seen Noah play, and he's super good, and you can always see him on the stage, because he's on the right, and he just stands up with his big old string bass thing. Really cool. The second thing I was going to say was, I know Matthew mentioned keeping up with the music programs throughout the school. He said he wanted to better the program and stuff, and I'm sure you're about that, too. So, if there's anything that I can do from NAP, once, I guess, you're going to college and you're a junior, but if there's anything that I can do from NAP, just let me know. Help you guys.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say something about Noah, because I've grown up with him, literally, like, forever, I feel like, and like, seeing him on the cello from when he was little, and then like, watching him from when I'm in the student section, he's in the marching band, so he's on the, like, stand, and he just like, changes a whole vibe of a football game with his bass. And that says a lot about someone, and he literally, like, his character comes through his music, because I watch every single one of his Snapchat stories and every single video he posts on Instagram, even though I don't like him sometimes, he gets on me for that.
True fan.
Yeah. He makes like, mashups, I guess, kind of, he makes music on this thing, and it's honestly really cool, and I really enjoy it, and like, his passion for music is just amazing, and it shows through everything he does.
That's wonderful.
Thank you. I never thought my SoundCloud career would be brought up.
You never know.
Appreciate it, Sydney.
Thank you very much. We're very proud of you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Thank you for everything. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Virginia Arrington to come forward. Virginia Arrington is our Assistant Principal and Administrative Service Coordinator. She will recognize principals whose school qualify for the PBIS recognition.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Chairman, Board Members. Tonight, we are recognizing nine schools for their PBIS recognition. That stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Support, and the emphasis is on a schoolwide system of support that include tiered levels of proactive strategies for defining, teaching, and supporting appropriate student behaviors to create positive school environments. Schools can earn recognition based on their efforts, based on criteria provided by the North Carolina Department of Instruction. Green ribbon is achieved by earning a 70% or better on the Tier One of the Tier Fidelity Inventory, which is a self-assessment, and an 80% or better on school-wide evaluation tool, which is completed by the school's PBIS team and external coach. The Model School is achieved by earning a 75% or better on Tier One, and an 80% or better on the Tier Two of the Tier Fidelity Inventory, and a 90% or better on the school-wide evaluation tool. For the 2017-18 school year, nine of the Currituck County schools received a recognition banner. And so, if the principals will come forward and receive their banner. Green ribbon recognition was earned by Knott's Island Elementary. And the other schools were Model School recognition, and they were earned by Central Elementary. WT Griggs Elementary. Moyack Middle School. Currituck County Middle School. And Currituck County High School. Congratulations and thank you.
Picture time. Let's squeeze together. All right, on three, ready? One, two, three. Super. Thank you.
Super.
At this time, I would like to ask for a motion for approval of the agenda, but I would like to exempt the minutes from last month's meeting. Dr. Dobney has asked that they be exempted.
Okay, so moved.
Second. Any discussion?
While we, while we exempting them.
Dr. Dobney, if you'd like to explain the exemption.
Because I want to correct the minutes once we get to that point. And I think she was going to make it item, what was it, F2?
Any, any further discussion?
A minute.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is approved. At this time, we'd have our public comments session. The public comments session is a time when an individual or a group can address the board about our schools. This is not a time to speak about issues or concerns involving identifiable personnel or students. Matters of this nature should be submitted in writing to the superintendent, and your concerns will be addressed. Individuals or groups will be called in order in which they signed up, and we will be asked and will be asked to limit their remarks to three minutes, and please state your name and address. Ms. Jones, did we have anyone sign up tonight?
No.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have our student board member reports. We have Kealan Hartman, Cindy McDonald, Colin Coffey, and Mallory Fields. Kealan, I'd like to start with you.
Hello, board. So, to start off this new year of reports, we have Moyack Elementary. After a busy December month of events and a restful winter break, January will be a time for rejuvenation and a refocus on student learning and leadership at MES. Some of this month's events include our January Student of the Month Luncheon on January 25th, and kindergarten swim lessons taking place at the YMCA mid-month. Happy 2019, everyone. Next, we have Jarvisburg Elementary. Happy New Year from all of us at JES. We hope you all had a wonderful and relaxing break. It is full speed ahead for us in the new year. The focus for 2019 is gratitude. Each staff member is participating in gratitude writing, in which they focus on three positive experiences per day. Each staff member was given a gratitude journal to jot down their daily positives. We are excited to embark on this journey and share our positive vibes with one another throughout the remainder of the school year. This month will also hold our Leader of the Month Luncheon for December and January leaders, and our PBIS Reward Incentive Day for our kiddos. Here's to an amazing 2019. Then, from Central Elementary. Seasons greetings. We here at Central hope everyone had the happiest of holiday seasons. January looks to be a quiet month. We have a Class Picture Day on the 24th, and we'll be celebrating positive behavior on January 25th with Rice Krispie Cooking Fun. And so, then I pass it off to Sydney.
Hello, I'd like to start with Charbro Elementary. We had a great winter break, and we are ready to surge into the new year. We will focus on leadership and character building as we look forward to starting our second annual Booster-A-Thon program. January 18th is the end of the second grading period. Report cards will come home on January 25th, and we will have our award program on January 31st. Have a great beginning to 2019. I will now move into Griggs Elementary School. Happy New Year. Mallards are excited to be back and ready to kick off 2019. February 1st will be Class Pictures. I will now pass it to Colin Coffey.
Hello, board. I will be starting with Knott's Island Elementary. As we come back from our winter break, KI students or staff are once again, are working on becoming the best we can be. January is a quiet month at KI, with a PTA meeting on January 16th, and our second nine weeks awards assembly on January 29th. Next, I go to Currituck County Middle School. Happy New Year from the CCMS Raider family. December was a busy month. We hosted a family movie night and had our winter concert. With school back in session, there is a lot going on this month. Today, Mr. Stefanik was the moderator of our annual Geography Beat. Congratulations to our winner, Cara McCauley, and our alternate, Bella Thomas. We wish Cara luck as she competes to attempt to qualify for the state Geography Beat. Our Beta Club is sponsoring the Winter Wonderland Dance and will be on January 11th. As the end of the semester approaches, Mr. Latornu?
Laterno?
Laterno, yeah.
Laterno. Will be highlighting the artists at CCMS. There will be an art show that will showcase every student's progress on January 16th from 8:50 till 3 o'clock. The students will present to have conversations and share their art with visitors. Be sure to stop by. Finally, our students will be completing round two of the NC check-ins on January 23rd. Finally, our students will be completing round two of the NC check-ins on January 23rd and 24th. In reading and math, teachers and students will use this valuable assessment data to determine areas that need to be reinforced prior to the next NC check-in. Next we go to Moyac Middle School. Happy New Year from Moyac Middle School. The teachers and staff have returned from a restful winter break and are rejuvenated and ready for class. Next I pass it on to Mallory.
Alright, I'm gonna start with JP Napp. JP Napp finished up final exams December 13th through 19th and student performance in COA courses was strong again this fall. Napp students completed 515 college courses with 85% of the grades reporting a C or better. 71% of those grades were As and Bs. The second semester kicked off today and Napp welcomed our new Assistant Principal, Mrs. Christina Bowyer. The first senior meeting of the semester was also held today in the Napp Media Center. Graduation information, academic standards, and other important information was shared. Seniors also met with seminar teachers to discuss spring requirements for the seminar course. Seminar teachers have started planning the first Life Skills and Success Forum scheduled for March 1st at Napp. Topics include self-advocacy, communication, workplace etiquette, internships, and much more. COA classes begin tomorrow, January 4th. And to finish it off with the high school, we are so proud to announce that Currituck County High School recently became one of the only 1,800 high schools worldwide endorsed to implement the innovative AP Capstone Program offered through the College Board. This endeavor includes two courses taken in sequence, the AP Seminar and the AP Research Component which helps students pursue the additional challenge in high school of further developing skills essential to college success including research, collaboration, and communication. That is it.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time we need to take action on calendar flexibility. Superintendent Stefanik?
Thank you Ms. Etheridge. Ms. Etheridge and Board Members, it has been recommended that Boards of Education throughout the state adopt a resolution encouraging the state legislature to return calendar development and calendar flexibility to the local boards of education. As folks may know, there is a state law that was put in play, I believe in 2004 and it says that, except for Napp, schools are not allowed to begin before the Monday closest to, I believe, August 26th and they can't finish school any later than the Friday closest to June 11th. So needless to say, it kind of bookends our school year and with that, we have found that anytime there's any type of weather event, it's hard to find makeup days to get our hours in that we have to get in by state law. Also, there has been a push to try to align semesters, at least at the high school levels, with the Christmas break and allowing the first semester to end in December and the second semester naturally to begin after the two-week Christmas break. So the recommended resolution, little bit long, but we read it to make sure that everybody has clarity about what you're voting on. Whereas the North Carolina General statutes give local boards of education powers of supervision and control of the local school systems and whereas local control over establishing school calendars is an integral component of school system supervision and administrative powers with which local boards of education have been vested and whereas in 2004, the North Carolina General Assembly seized control of setting school calendars and imposed a one-size-fits-all mandate on how school calendars are to be set. And whereas the current one-size-fits-all school calendar start date is no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26th and the end date is no later than the Friday closest to June 11th and whereas the state mandated late-August start date means high schools do not complete the first semester until mid-to-late January and whereas the current state law essentially requires high school students to take first semester exams after the winter break which negatively impacts test scores according to students and educators and whereas the second semester for high schools starts two to three weeks later than community colleges and universities and whereas superintendents report that the calendar misalignment makes it nearly impossible for high school students or recent winter graduates to take courses at nearby community colleges or universities during the second semester and whereas exams for advanced placement and international baccalaureate classes are given on the same day nationwide and the current calendar law shortens the amount of time North Carolina students have to learn the material before test day and whereas it is well documented through multiple studies that children will experience a phenomenon known as summer learning loss which has a disproportionate impact on low-income children. Almost finished. And whereas long summer breaks can also negatively impact child nutrition as low-income children who have access to regular meals at school through the free and reduced-priced meal program may not have access to those regular meals at home. And whereas with little flexibility built into the calendar, scheduling makeup days is extremely challenging and whereas major hurricanes and severe winter storms have caused Currituck County schools to miss 15 and 1/2 school days over the past three years and whereas fall sports and band begin August 1st because schedules for extracurriculars have not changed to coincide with the state mandated school calendar and whereas local boards of education are best equipped to understand the balancing act of meeting the community's needs and maximizing student success. Therefore, be it resolved that the Currituck County Board of Education requests the North Carolina General Assembly to restore local control of school calendars to best meet the calendar preferences of families, educators, and businesses in our community while allowing for innovative experimental approaches to improve student achievement. Again, with the approval of this resolution, it doesn't set any calendar in stone, but it gives us a chance to survey our community and find out which calendar setup would best work for our students and our families.
I move that we approve the resolution.
I second it.
Any discussion?
Yes. I'm not against approving it. There was some language in there I thought I'd like changed or removed possibly. Was referencing, as I recall, one-size-fits-all a couple times. There's just, I'm not saying it's not an accurate description. I just kind of feel like it might come across in a not-so-pleasant way if somebody's looking at it on the other side. So what I would propose is that we approve this.
With the phrase taken out?
Yeah, and I think it's in there twice. And because I don't think that currently the school calendar they approved starts off describing itself as one-size-fits-all and maybe that's nothing, but I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to attempt to have a conversation and I think if you start off with a conversation, calling it something that they might not think it is, maybe is not the best way to do that, so that's the only.
That was recommended language and I don't think taking that phrase out changes the intent of those two sections of the resolution at all.
Also, I guess it's about six down. Whereas the second semester for high schools starts two to three weeks later than community colleges and universities, that's not really accurate.
It's a little bit accurate, yeah. The second semester for, or COA starts tomorrow and then our semester doesn't end until, I believe.
Starts the 23rd.
The 23rd. Yeah, so it's a long time. And the part of that that interested me, it's the same thing in August, you know, so it's not just that second semester, it's first semester as well.
Those kids have to start early in order to do it.
Yes, yes.
Well, I know the universities are not going back as early, so I guess that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, no, yeah, community colleges might be on a different calendar than the universities.
I know, I remember when this law became effective and, you know, it was a big issue here. I don't think we were back here then, but.
No, it wasn't.
You know, we had concerns with, we kept going back early and early and earlier. Some of them even started in July. And it was tough for us. We didn't, of course, Currituck didn't, but I think Camden did. And putting our buses in the midst of that summer traffic was not a good thing.
Oh, sure.
And then we've got young high school students who need to work summers and they're needed at the beach basically Memorial Day, Labor Day, so I think we need to consider that. And I realize we're not passing a calendar, but I would have concerns with, I think, when that flexibility, and I think that's why this came to me, that some took advantage of that flexibility.
Sure.
So.
Like I said before, this isn't, we're not stating a calendar, we're not saying that, you know, we're going to a year-round school or anything like that. This just allows folks to know that we would like to have a little bit of flexibility so if we need some extra time, you know, to align semesters or extra time to align with community college calendars or whatever, then we would have the flexibility to do that.
I do agree with Mr. Coffey about removing that third bullet.
So.
I think he said remove the phrase, not actually the bullet. He said remove the two phrases.
Okay.
And then just, yeah. The one-size-fits-all phrase in there.
Yeah, the rest of the language I don't have a problem with, quite honestly.
Because it's in there twice.
And quite honestly, personally me, I think it was the dag on tourism people and the lobbyists that controlled that and quite honestly, I personally wouldn't have a problem with them starting school earlier, you know? Plenty of schools do start earlier, they just don't happen to do it.
Well typically, when those schools start earlier, they have breaks in between that are more, they have that opportunity unless we have bad weather and that kind of thing. I remember serving on the Calendar Committee when they enforced this calendar that we have now or these restrictions that we have now and it was nearly impossible to, I mean, you didn't really have any flexibility at all. You start, you end, and you try to pull those days in that were the workdays that were required by law, so.
I think that third bullet, it just is not a very nice tone to it.
Would you read it again, because all of us don't have it.
Whereas in 2004, the North Carolina General Assembly seized control of setting school calendars and imposed a one-size-fits-all mandate on how school calendars are to be set. I just think it's a negative.
But I mean, it's exactly what happened.
It puts them on the defense.
They passed a ruling, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, you could leave, I mean, took control of setting school calendars because, you know, seize bothers you.
We could just list that, we could just list it as the date when the mandate went into effect and I can rephrase that.
That's true, you know, if you just said, that's right, when it went, you don't have to say seize control and impose the one-size-fits-all.
Yeah, we can say in 2004, the North Carolina General Assembly set the mandate on how school calendars are to be.
There you go. That sounds much nicer.
I mean, we don't want to say that the tourism lobbyists are the ones that backed it and started that whole fire.
No, we don't want to say that.
So what I'm saying is there are certain avenues that we all want to tread down.
I can do that.
Okay.
We can keep the intent of the resolution and just rephrase those bullets, no problem.
I have a first and I have a second. Any further discussion?
Should we ask our students?
Call the questions, Madam Chairman.
Okay, go on. Okay. So approved?
Oh, we haven't voted yet.
All in favor?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, so approved.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
And then ask for the opposed.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and it's approved, thank you.
I will revise it and then when it's ready, Madam Chairman, you and I will need to sign it before we send it off.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have the second reading and adoption of 2018 Fall Policy Updates and Action and Dr. Dobney, this is where that was supposed to be omitted, the request of pulling out the minutes.
Oh, that came out, that came out of the consent agenda.
Okay. Okay. Alright, do I have a motion to approve?
Did we make the adjustments that we discussed at the last, because I'm still looking at the one that's.
Yes, yeah, made, any one that was asked last time to revise sentences and check on some things, we did all that at board request.
Yeah, well during discussion, I want to mention that.
Okay.
We need a motion and a second first.
Yep.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, sure.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. 2110 Board Member Elections, 3410 Testing and Assessment Program, and 6401 9100 Ethics and Purchasing Function, we made changes to, so this should technically be the first reading of those.
Okay.
So if you want to change that to first reading and the rest second reading, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, and I had a question about 2110. In my notes from the last board meeting, it wasn't 100% evident to me whether the board just wanted to stay with the election process the way it is and even year November or whether we wanted to pursue reverting back to the state law from 1970 and taking the elections back to the primaries.
I believe what happened, left that blank and we said, put the November general election in there and pursue what we need to do in order to change it to the March primaries. In which case, if we decided, if we can get the bill passed, we might move it to the March primary.
Okay. We did some preliminary checking in the county and they said that they believed it involved state-level action too and so I'll have to check at the state level and see what we need to do.
I'm not so sure that some of this is accurate anyhow because over to the right on notes, it starts talking about the GS 115C-37A, I guess states that county boards of education shall be elected to a nonpartisan basis at time of the primary election and then biannally after that. So because I know that there's counties in the state now that some of their board of education is partisan, I'm not sure sure that's still even accurate. Something's not right.
I think that you can become partisan, but you have to get approval from the state and I believe that the General Assembly passed this year six counties that would be partisan, one being Dare County. But our county has to request it, is what Senator Cook's office stated.
Okay, well then it would seem to me that if they are doing that now, that this language would say that, language I read, "or if you got approved," which I'm not seeing, so I'm not trying to nitpick the statute, it just seems from 1970 and I know other things are going on, so maybe it's not 100% complete. I don't know. I just know that other things are happening other than what's described there.
I think you have to have special permission, kind of like what we're trying to do with the transportation.
Right, but generally it mentions that somewhere in there, "or."
Yeah.
And then you follow that process. Usually the law's not just left open-ended and you come in and plug another piece in later unless they amend it or change it. That's all I'm saying. Look, wherever we decide to proceed, that's fine, I just think this note of this statute is incomplete or outdated, I'm not sure which.
I'll pursue getting more information from the state on that, on the steps that we would need to take and then the board can decide whether to leave it in November or revert back to the primary.
As a part of that discussion, would we also talk about it being partisan or nonpartisan?
I would have to check that out too. I thought the, my understanding of the partisan piece for the six counties, that that actually came from a state representative and it wasn't pushed by the locals necessarily. The state representative made the recommendation to make those six school districts partisan elections.
I thought I read that in the paper too, that I may be wrong, but I think that's what it was.
That was my understanding. So I'd have to see who can start it.
I was told by Senator Cook's office that the county, the counties had requested it and so they carried it forward for the counties, so.
I've heard conflicting information pertaining to it as well and all I'm saying is, none of either of those scenarios are mentioned in the statute in those notes.
So clarification needed.
Alright, we'll get it.
Okay, so with Dr. Dobney stating that it's our first reading and with the language we're not approving, what?
I would say of the list that Dr. Dobney put out there, take 2110 and just remove it from any action tonight at all. Not first reading or second reading and then the other ones that he read could be on first reading and the remainder of the list that we had no questions or changes about last meeting would be on second reading for approval tonight.
What were the others other than 2110?
3410, Testing and Assessment Program, that dealt with English language learners, testing them, I think it was during the first year, which is not the way it's done.
Right.
I think it's after the third year. And then 6401 talked about the language in one of the sentences and just adding or deleting the end of it because it made more sense. You want me to look that up? I can.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to write down which ones we were referencing.
Could you send us those that Dr. Dobney is talking about, Mr. Stefonic, so that we could read over the corrected version?
We can send those out tomorrow.
Get that whole pack, we've got that whole big packet.
Yeah, we have it.
We got the packet, yeah, but not with the corrected version.
These would be the revised ones.
We got, yeah, correct. So do we need to amend the motion that's on the floor?
If you want to amend, who made the motion?
I think I made a motion to approve it.
And I second.
Yeah, just amend it to delete 2110 and to make 3410 and 6401 the first reading and everything else as a second reading.
Okay, so I amend the motion to approve the second reading, excluding, approve the second reading excluding 2110, we're going to remove, and then we're going to change from second reading to first reading, 3410 and 6401.
Right.
And I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Okay, and we're coming up with our consent agenda. At this time, I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Excuse me, Ms. Etheridge, F2?
Yeah.
F2 was the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
That's before, that's before the consent agenda, then.
You have to do the minutes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I ask that the minutes be revised from the last meeting. Voting members, it still listed me as chair and Ms. Kraft as vice chair, and it really needs to be Ms. Etheridge as, you know, vice, or chairwoman, and Ms. Rose as vice chairwoman. And it would be obvious when I mentioned the next thing, because it would have meant that I would have had to not allowed myself to vote on one of the issues, so. We need to note that. Okay, in F, on Policy 6420, Contracts with the Board, and Policy 9120, Bidding for Construction Work, Ms. Kraft asked the question about the recommendations from the School Boards Association and our attorney, and it was noted that 90,000 was a normal limit. Well, when the question was called, there was no, there was nothing asked for those opposed, in which case Ms. Kraft and I would oppose, you know, that, because the motion was to bring the 90,000 back to 50, and we wanted to keep it at 90. And you can just say without objection, they're changed.
Okay, without objection.
I'd like to make that change, yes.
The change of the, we had, we had made the change of the 50.
Oh, I want to make the change to the minutes, is what I'm saying.
Oh, okay, yes.
Just to where Ms. Kraft and I are.
Do I have a second?
You don't need to.
We never got the opportunity to vote.
Right.
She just asked for those that approved, she never asked for those that.
Right, it was three to two, but they didn't, they didn't vote.
But we never, it was never noted that we voted.
Want to have an opportunity to vote now?
No, 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 we are getting it straight now, is what we're saying.
They just wanted it recorded in the minutes.
Yes, ma'am, and that's what I was proposing.
Okay. All right. Do we need any approval?
No, only if there was opposition to it.
On that, okay. At this time, I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? The agenda is approved. Information items, we have a work session scheduled for February 13th at the NAP Professional Learning Center at 4:00 PM. Our regular scheduled Board of Education meeting will be February 13th here at the Currituck County Courthouse at 6:30 PM. And at this time, I ask for board member comments. Superintendent Stefonic?
Well, thanks. Happy New Year. Good to see everybody back, and looking forward to an exciting and productive 2019.
Mr. Craft?
I'd like to also wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I want to mention that I am very impressed and touched often by things that maybe you might not ordinarily recognize, like the ROTC, and how they're really seemingly well put together and under some great leadership, and what a remarkable opportunity that they were able to take advantage of. The volleyball team, aspiring to rise to the highest level, doing it. And our, you know, lack of better terms, I cannot recall the two fellows' names in here, that was the course, second base and the.
Matthew Weeks and Noah Justice.
Yes, ma'am, I should be better. But with all their accomplishments and all their amazing talents, I'll be honest with you, I got starstruck and forgot their names.
I wrote it down, Will.
But what an amazing group. And then we get nine recognitions out of 10 schools for the PBIS recognition, Positive Behavior, Interventions, and Support. So a lot of good work, and very impressive, and I thank you. God bless Currituck County.
Thank you. Ms. Rose?
I had the opportunity to attend several different things over the holidays and enjoyed the programs at the different schools, and tonight it was a proud moment to see all of the wonderful things going on at Currituck County High School. Very proud of all of our students' accomplishments, the ROTC, the chorus, the band, our volleyball team, and I truly do not believe that any of this would be happening without the hard work of our teachers and our coaches and our principal. So hats off to all those folks this evening.
Yes. Dr. Dobney?
Yes. I thought maybe Mr. Stefonic would volunteer to be third base, since Noah was base and Matthew was second base.
He triouts.
It's like career shortstop, Dr. Dobney, career shortstop, not a third baseman. I'd also like to mention that we're going to have a joint meeting with the county commissioners on the 15th, and that's going to be at 6 o'clock at the Extension Center.
Yes.
Five.
And Kealan did not ask the question that I told him to ask.
Uh-oh.
I apologize. We really need to plan a Hawaii trip for the student board members.
Only if the whole board can.
And is that going to happen?
I second.
Definitely.
We were just talking about that at an earlier meeting. Mr. Craft is working on a plane. Once he gets that arranged, we'll take up the conversation again.
Well, let's be realistic now. Mark lives behind the airstrip, and I was saying that he could buy a plane on Craigslist for about $20,000.
Not sure I want to go on that plane, just saying.
I'm busy that day.
I might have been wanting for $20,000.
I'm sticking to bits.
Oh, my goodness. All right, Ms. Kraft?
Yes, I'd say that it's a good day to be from Currituck, because we have amazing students, and it's very obvious, the amount of talent and just wonderful things that are going on with our students, particularly at the high school, but I'm sure we could gather it up with all of our schools, so I'm really proud of all of you. I want to give a shout out to Sandy Reynolds, Chief Information Officer, and her staff, and there's lots of other people that were in the background with this, but anyway, all their hard work in getting our webpage updates, and she has said that it's still a work in progress, but it's looking good, and I'm really excited about that. I visited seven of our schools since the last board meeting. Santa has the sniffles, Moyoc Middle School, Elementary School. I think I've only missed one in 32 years.
Oh, my goodness.
So it was wonderful. The holiday concert at Moyoc Middle School, the band concert, and then the band concert at Currituck High School, all of that was great, and I wish everyone a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Yes, I enjoyed some of the festivities over the holidays at the different schools. I was very impressed with Tiffany Arbogast, she just blows me away every year, her chorus concert for Christmas. I just, I walk out of that auditorium just, you know, have the holiday spirit after listening to the kids perform. Also, dear to my heart, Central Elementary, y'all do a great job. I loved the holiday sing-along that you had, I really enjoyed that. New Year's Day, a fresh start, a new chapter in life waiting to be written, new questions to be asked, embraced and loved, answers to be discovered, and then lived in this transformative year of delight and self-discovery. Today, carve out a quiet interlude for yourself in which to dream, pen in hand, only dreams give birth to change. And Dr. Dobney touched on our January 15th joint meeting with the commissioners, tentatively 5:00 PM, is that what?
There's going to be a dinner at 5:00 PM, but the meeting officially starts at 6:00.
Okay. And with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second.
Meeting is adjourned.